Welcome, everybody, to the Shelburne Planning Commission Thursday, September 27th. I'm going to call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Are there --
Motion to approve the agenda.
Sorry? Motion by Dick, seconded by Stephen. All in favor? Or any discussion?
Aye.
All right. All in favor of the agenda stands? Aye.
Aye.
Sorry. That step just seems overly trivial to me. Okay. Next item is approval of the minutes. We've got two batches. The first batch is August 9th. Motion to approve the minutes from August 9th.
I move to approve.
Motion by Stephen. Is there a second?
I was not here that day.
Oh, that's fair. Then, all right, so we can't -- we shouldn't do this. We can still approve the minutes, right?
You can. You can. That's -- I mean, the bottom line is, but it's always really the choice of the person who wasn't there to --
Well --
I mean, it's asking that person to do something that not all people are comfortable with, so.
Whoever it is --
Kate's going to be here. Well.
You could try to delay it, and we just have to remember before the meeting adjourns.
I will make an -- I will add an agenda item on a future agenda to reopen those minutes if it's an issue. Is that a thing? Could we do that?
You could.
You're the chair.
Well, if that's the case, I'm going to stop asking for motions. Okay. Yeah, let's just -- let's approve this. I think we --
Maybe --
There's somebody here.
I thought I heard footsteps.
Well, mostly because we tried this last time, and I think we had a different set of three people who were here.
I think we should have a rule that after two meetings, we can approve the minutes.
Yeah. I think that that's reasonable. Yeah, we were going to do the August 9th. Hey. And then realized that Susanna wasn't here, so.
Oh, yeah. So, do you need a motion?
We have the motions. We just -- well, actually, we have a motion by Stephen.
Seconded.
And Dick seconded.
Okay.
So, the discussion, and I think that we were going to do this last time, and I don't think anybody had any comments. I know I did not. Nothing of consequence, anyway, but I wasn't sure if you might have. All right. Actually, the only comment that I was going to make is it does say that I wasn't present for the vote on number seven. I was, and I did vote yea, but you couldn't hear me because I was on the phone and muted or whatever. But that is completely irrelevant, neither here nor there. Okay. So, all in favor of approval of the minutes of August 9th as written?
Aye.
Aye? With Susanna abstaining. Okay. Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September 13th.
I wasn't there at that one. I would make a motion to approve the minutes of --
All right.
September 13th.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Dick, seconded by Susanna. Any discussion?
I'm not questioning the minutes, just part that I missed. Alternative facility, number nine. Why do we make up names that everyone has to ask what it means? Why can't we put in there "alternative path" or something, whatever it's supposed to be?
The wording was -- the wording is, in the regulation, "alternative facility such as a path."
Right. And an alternative facility would be something other than the original thing that's noted, which was the sidewalk.
Why can't we make it so that the average person that reads the town plan can understand?
Well, if we're going to change the language --
You have a chance to discuss that.
-- so that average people can read it. That's my only question on the minutes.
It's more rhetorical, right?
Yeah, fair. Fair enough. There actually is something, maybe under other business, that I could mention. I would like to work on trying to streamline across groups somehow, however that's possible, which is beyond the scope of the planning commission, but just to say that out loud. Okay. And just want to make sure. Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the minutes of August 13th, or September 13th as written?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Those minutes approved. Next item, are there any disclosures relating to any potential conflicts of interest on agenda items this evening? Seeing none. Open to the public, which -- hello, Pam? Hello, public? And I imagine that you're here for an agenda item later on, correct?
I think so, yeah.
Excellent.
Did you get an agenda?
I've got one.
Okay.
All right. Then, moving on to zoning topics, we have the housing subcommittee recommendations. How timely. Okay. Did -- was there a particular approach to this, or that we would want to take?
I'm happy to throw one of the images up on the screen so that people at home who are watching can see it and give you a little bit of orientation, but then I think I would turn things over to Pam to fill in any of the gaps or background. Unless you would like to start things off and --
No, you go right ahead.
The memo did include a memo that sets the stage for this, and it also included a table that looks like this, which was an attempt to summarize some of the ideas that the housing committee is putting forth as possible zoning changes. So, left-hand column basically identifies or recognizes the fact that the way our zoning is structured now differentiates between an accessory apartment that has one bedroom and accessory apartments that have two or more bedrooms. There's some additional detail behind that. A one-bedroom apartment that's 30% the size of the home to which it's accessory can qualify as a permitted use. So, there's very little -- there's very little process required before a request to establish an accessory apartment that's one bedroom, 30% of the size of the house or less, to get approved. If someone would like to have a two-bedroom accessory apartment or an accessory apartment that's more than 30%, but less than 50%, the process gets more complicated. It requires conditional use review. I'm going to just talk about accessory apartments now before I go down to the duplex. So, the housing committee is recognizing, okay, those one-bedroom apartments, permitted uses right now, we don't want that. We want it to be -- they want it to be a permitted use. But they're also suggesting that as long as the accessory residential use is less than 50% of the size of the use that it's accessory to, the house that it's accessory to, that too could also be permitted and would not require a trip to the development review board. So, it would mean more accessory apartments, or essentially any accessory apartment, could be handled administratively rather than some of them going to the development review board. So, that's the essence of the accessory apartment part. The thing about duplexes, I'm going to start by saying there are different percentages used across different zoning districts. It's not like in every zoning district, we know that the amount of land required for a duplex is twice the amount that's required for a single-family. And that kind of makes some intuitive sense. You'd think, oh, well, if a house, a single-family house, requires an acre, a duplex would require two. But the fact of the matter is, is that the way that Shelburne zoning regs have evolved over time is that there's a bit of a discount across districts, but the amount of the discount varies. So, some districts, it's 80%, some it's 75, and one, I forget which one exactly, it's as little as 66% of the amount of land for a single-family home. What the housing committee has done, or is suggesting, is that we standardize the percentage, and we say that if someone wants to apply for a duplex, it would be 66% of the land area that a single-family home requires, as long as we're in the sewer service area, and 75% outside the sewer service area. So, instead of having different numbers across the districts, it would standardize them, like I said, and it would be 66% inside the sewer service area, acquiring essentially less land in the places where the plan and the zoning regs want more development to take place, and a bit more to happen outside in the rural district. The other element of the proposal having to do with duplexes is that there would be a way to get, it almost amounts to a density bonus, and have the 66% go to as low as 50% if someone goes through the conditional use process. What does that mean? It basically means two-for-one. If the land area required for a duplex unit is 50% that of a single-family, if someone goes through the conditional use process at the DRB, they would be able to put a duplex where a single-family house would go otherwise. So, that's the broad strokes of what they're talking about. The way that it would look in terms of changes to the regs would be manifested in the table, or the tables at Article 2, and you can see how the numbers would be modified in the red. And I've just illustrated that these are the districts that are inside the sewer service area, and the rural and conservation are outside. And that's all that I'm going to talk about right now. And just, Pam?
I think you've done a big job of explaining it.
You should have your own mic.
Do you have a question?
Susanna, I think I have.
I'm just curious, just to break it down a little bit more. So, if someone wanted to build a duplex from scratch versus they have an older home, they want to split it 50-50 and create a duplex, there's now the -- would be the same standard or different standard for their property and size?
It wouldn't -- it doesn't differentiate. It doesn't differentiate. So, if someone had an existing home, let's say it had been part of a subdivision created two years ago, and they created the lots right at the minimum lot size for a single-family home, if someone said, gee, I'd like to go through the conditional use process and convert this to a duplex, they could conceivably do that. They couldn't do it under the regulations now. And what they could do today without a zoning change is put in an accessory apartment, a one-bedroom accessory apartment, that's 30% the size of the house. They could do that administratively. They could put in a two-bedroom apartment, that's as long as it's less than 50%, they would have to go to the board for that. And to go to something where it's equal size, that's the thing that I think that the housing committee has seen, is that there are some situations where we could, we as staff or some reader of the zoning regs would see that they could do something, but it's not practical given the house. So, we tell them, someone comes in, let's say it's a house that's 50 years old, and it lends itself to this idea of having an apartment on the ground floor and an apartment on the second floor, we would say, well, the way the zoning regs are now, you're going to have to split one of the floors so that one is the primary and the other is the accessory apartment if you're going to qualify. Because if they're the same size, it's a duplex, and you don't have enough land.
Right.
And under this kind of proposal, if it was to go through, if someone gets conditional use approval, it could conceivably be a duplex. Now, if we take it out of the situation where someone is renovating an existing house, let's say a developer is doing a project, they're looking at a piece of land, they're laying out lots, one of the options that they could have is to do it as a single-family development, or another one would be to have it as a duplex development, essentially with the same-sized lots, but for the houses, for the duplexes to be built as part of the approval process, they'd have to get the DRB to give conditional use approval.
Okay.
As I understood, this is a proposal that the intention is to introduce to the planning commission, start a discussion, not take it terribly far, because this is just exposing people to the housing subcommittee's idea.
Is this controversial? Would this be controversial? I mean, it seems smart to me, and it's along the --
Helps with density.
Right. It's certainly in line with the plan that we've been working on.
I think that it could be in some places, yes, I think it could be controversial, or some parts of it. I think that the accessory apartment piece is probably easier for people to wrap their minds around, because we need to remember, the accessory apartment requires the owner to live in one or the other. So, you will never have a situation with accessory apartments where it's an absentee or an investment property. With a duplex, there's no such restriction.
Got it.
And for folks who would say --
I just wanted to add that the accessory apartment was sort of where the housing committee started this discussion, and, you know, once we got into it a little more, we realized that the duplexes were also in the same sort of realm of the criteria. And so, I mean, the accessory apartment, to us, it was a way to open up more opportunity for infill, but still protecting that neighborhood feel of, you know, not having the absentee owner. And so, but we also believe in the duplex changes as well.
Yeah, I think this makes tremendous sense. Oh, God, I said that word. Tremendous. I'm trying to not say that word. Let's see. I do have some concerns about the, you know, the pushback that some people might have, at least initially, because this is kind of a big change, and wonder if the same requirement about owner occupation could be extended to duplexes, and just if that was something that you guys had thought about. This is something that is often discussed with, you know, missing-middle housing as a way to, I think you can get just a very standard FHA loan, and you can build up to four units, and as long as one of them is, I believe there may be some requirements on owner occupation. So, you know, I don't know the ins and outs of it, but I've heard, I think I've heard that, if I understood it correctly, and that might be something that would be, make people a little bit more comfortable, because this is kind of a big change, but also, at the same time, enable people who have these particularly older houses that are maybe not so conducive to the typical ADU strategy, or they don't want that, you know, to have a little bit more flexibility about how they do this. You know, I'm probably like many people in Shelburne, in a house that is too big for me, now that my kids have grown up, and, you know, this, I would love to do this. You know, we were just having a discussion the other night. Wouldn't it be great if we could just lop off about a third of our house and, you know, make it go away? Everything else is great about it. So, anyway, that would just be one initial reaction, but I think it's great, and I'm so glad you guys are thinking along these lines, and thank you.
I can just interject on your point. One of the things that this reg wouldn't have any bearing on is there are lots of subdivisions, developments that were created with homeowners' declarations that might limit a property owner's ability to do this. So, one of the things I was dreading was somebody saying, well, can you calculate how many new units this might mean? And the answer I was going to give was, not without doing a lot of research to figure out what the restrictions, because I'm aware that some of them could limit it.
Yeah.
So, it is something that individuals would need to ascertain on their own.
Now, is that something that almost needs to happen at the level of the state? You know, the states went in, and the state went in and created a statute that, you know, an accessory dwelling unit is by right.
Well, that's for zoning purposes, but I don't believe that the state statute would prohibit a homeowners' association or a developer from creating a development. It's not like the close lines.
Huh.
That was written differently. I'm not aware of the allowance. It says no zoning regulation may have the effect of prohibiting, or something like that. So, it doesn't go beyond that. I mean, maybe it's a great idea to have the law rewritten so that it would address it.
Yeah.
What would -- I am always looking at the worst side of the duplex part. Just in terms of a new development, say somebody has a five-acre lot, they can build a single-family house on it. They could also build essentially two single-family houses on it, connected by a little something, and call it a duplex, by if this were the case, we're allowing a duplex. It could be, you know, each 3,000 square feet. That would be a con that I would see, that we'd want to try to, like, watch out for, because that would be like going against what it seems like the intent of the housing committee is doing. So, I think we'd have to be careful about that, or else somebody has an existing house already on whatever-sized lot that's permissible, they build another house just like it and connect it.
Yeah. The definition of duplex, if this is something that the commission wants to go forward, that's the kind of thing that could be investigated as a next step, is tweaking the definition of duplex so that it prevents that kind of gaming, because there's at least one situation I can think of where the board, development review board, approved something that is that kind of bastardized version of a duplex. So, we would need to tighten it up in the definition of duplex, or just have some standard. But I think in the definition of duplex, a minimum level of integration between the units.
Yeah. Or maybe a size limitation, so that we don't get too big, you know, mansions out there that are just connected in some way.
Yeah. I think there was some discussion of sizes, and in the end, that wasn't part of the housing subcommittee's recommendation, but it doesn't surprise me that this is where the conversation could go.
I think it's totally great when it comes to somebody having a two-story house and wanting to use the upstairs and sell it or rent it. I guess if it's a duplex, it could be sold, right? It would be technically two separate properties or two condos or --
It could be sold as the sort of situation where an owner owns both and rents it as they pay, you know, to pay the mortgage, so to speak, or it could be condoized and sold separately.
It would no longer take an owner to live in the building.
Given the way duplexes work as compared to accessory apartments, unless there's some other mechanism that we pull into it.
Which could be a good thing, because it would encourage homeownership on a very small scale of just a half a house. And in that case, I could see some really good things. It's where somebody takes advantage of it and really milks the system to just get twice as many buildings onto a lot for profit.
Right. And I just wanted to clarify on the two-bedroom or less than 50%. So, that would be two bedrooms or a single bedroom that is less than 50% of the existing area.
Yeah. Well, a single bedroom, more than 30% would technically go beyond what we allow now as a permitted use.
Right. And the sizes that you're comparing against are, it's square foot, I'm a square footage of the --
Of the principal wall.
Okay. Good? Yeah, I think that's a good introduction, and then the next step for this would be to get this on to a future agenda and delve into it a little bit deeper and work on definitions and that sort of thing, and work through some of those edge cases.
Sure.
Yeah. Excellent.
Sure. And if you'd like the housing committee to do any further work on, you know, tweaking the definition or anything like that, just let us know.
Yeah. I think maybe just from this discussion, any ideas around connectivity and that sort of thing?
Okay.
Like what we would mean by duplex? I mean, is it to say 3,000-square-foot houses connected by a garage, or like a strip of land versus a shared wall or vertical, however that is, just some of those considerations? And maybe what's being done in other areas nearby or something to be consistent?
Okay. That sounds good. I would suspect that people are going to be most concerned about threats to the character of the area. So, I'm wondering if there are maybe some form-based applications that could be developed for suggesting what would be appropriate in different parts of Shelburne. So, there is some predictability about the potential transformation of a neighborhood that could occur, just some parameters around it. Because I think the, you know, it's a sort of making it as likely as possible for people to say yes to and support the idea, rather than, because I think if people start to feel that it's something they need to be concerned about, and that could have a negative outcome, that'll be harder to overcome. So, I think stress the positives, you know, and what this could achieve, and, you know, and I think people are starting to notice that their kids are having a hard time affording to purchase here. So, there's some, I think there's some sympathy to this idea. They just want to make sure it happens in a way that they find is compatible, so. Okay. Yeah.
For that reason, I think there should be a cap on the two-bedroom, to make it more acceptable for someone building next door to houses that are close to you.
For the ADU you're talking about?
Well, it changes on a very small lot, it would change that character of the area. Somebody used to have a private backyard, and all of a sudden, if you had a 4,000-square-foot house and you put a 2,000-foot addition on it behind that house, another driveway, another garage, or whatever, that does, will change the way that people will look at it.
Does ADU stand for accessory dwelling unit?
Yeah.
Okay. Is the varied district percentages, is that to prevent, is that currently that way because of the large pieces of land trying to prevent large homes?
I don't know that. Trying to refresh my memory if there's a rhyme or reason. I'm not sure there's a rhyme or reason. I think it was to avoid really weird-looking numbers, because if you can look at the table, I mean, the numbers, by using a constant percentage, you get some weird numbers, like 26, 640, and 16, 650, and I think, and 19, 980. I think that the percentages we've ended up with, and the fact that they're varied, stems from the fact that when the planning commission was working on this long ago, it rounded, it saw these weird numbers, and in some cases, it rounded to, you know, it might have rounded up, or it might have rounded down, and that's what brought us to these percentages. It was less systematic than trying to make the numbers not seem just like really odd numbers. Because if someone calls up and says, what's the density for a duplex or an accessory apartment, you got to tell them, and they'll go, what? How many acres? And they'll say, no, 19,980 square feet.
Valid.
That's kind of a weird number. I mean, not to go to 20,000. I mean, that's, you know, the consistent percentage is where this proposal started, but, you know, if there's, if the commission embraces it, then I think you can, if you can deviate from that consistent percentage to get numbers that seem to be more sensible. Or they can be, I've seen both ways. I've seen some peculiar numbers in situations like this, but not nearly as odd.
Yes. Solid introduction, though. Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
Under that word, is correct. All right. And then, being slightly ahead of things, should we talk about the electric charging stations?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that was, I didn't do any briefing material, but yes, by all means, we can talk about that. It was something I distributed, I heard back from Andrew. He was very supportive. And there was no sponsor group like the housing subcommittee, so I wasn't thinking about having any kind of presentation. I was thinking that there are a few other topics that could also be discussed at a future meeting, but I was going to mention those at the end, but however much discussion you would like to have now, I just don't have any prepared.
Leslie, just open it up if there are any comments or anything.
Yeah, it's really smart. I think we should find out how much it costs. Again, it's right in line with the town plan. It's probably something we should get on a capital list within the next, within the short to medium term. short to medium term, I would think, unless it's a grant thing.
I, I would agree, and this ties into something I was gonna bring up later as well, but at the, while you were there, at the, the Select Board, when they were talking about coming up with a prioritization of recommended actions, not that it needs to be, I mean, it would be helpful to do it per section, which we'd already talked about, where at least having a top three would be relatively speaking viewed as priorities. But perhaps having a separate document along the lines of our work plan that adds in considerations around capital requirements and that sort of thing, just so that the Select Board can have a heads up and plans can be made. But I, I agree, I think that this would be a great thing to pursue, and it should be one of the earlier, sooner than later topics. And some of the language that I read, I actually was wondering if Kate wrote it.
So, um, if we can just touch on one aspect, um, I have the third slide up, and I would be interested in getting any kind of initial thoughts. Allow charging stations as a principal fueling station use. Just to remind everybody, Shelburne zoning regulations don't allow new gas stations. So the reason that we have the gas stations that we do where, what they are is because Shelburne zoning regs don't allow new fueling stations. So is there a sense that this, this proposal or this idea of having charging stations? Now, whether or not that would actually be something that a developer would come into Shelburne and want to propose, that may be a really remote thing. But if people were really excited about the prospect of changing the zoning regs so that they accommodated something like this, then I just wanted to point out that we don't allow additional gas stations. And so what would be the rationale for saying you can have an electric station, but not a gas station? Or would this mean that you would reconsider gas stations?
Does this, is there a quick charge where you go in and fuel up like you would with a gas station at this point in time?
Not quite that quick that I'm aware of.
I think it's like half an hour.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's one of the, I'm surprised the museum or farm doesn't have one or hasn't asked for one.
Rather than call them, whatever, call them auxiliary, you go to the drugstore and you can plug in. In existing parking, like you're not creating a new facility. You're just putting in on the curb. And if someone's parked there, I don't know how you do them, you meter them or?
Well, that would be accessory to the other.
You pay by the hour.
Yeah, that's, that would be a situation where it's accessory to something else. So if someone has an existing business and they're thinking, hey, let's just offer the ability for people to charge, like this is saying, in rare cases, a site that offers electric vehicle charging as its primary purpose. And if that, if the market says, yeah, Shelburne would be a great place for one of those things, right now, the zoning regs would be, well, no, you can't do that because we don't allow fueling stations. So I'm just saying, if, if people feel like that is a, that is a use that the zoning regs should accommodate, then I'm saying, just keep in mind that we don't allow the other kind, and be cool with that difference, or maybe there's gonna be a discussion of one.
I think the location of our current gas stations would be ideal locations for a fueling station. Or, as I mentioned, the more tourist-driven.
Well, I think it's, it's a difference of duration, like we were talking about. When you go to a gas station, you're in, you're fueling, and like three minutes later, you're gone.
Right.
But.
But because of where those stations are now, they're very walkable into the village. You can go out to eat, you can.
If you let businesses do it, it would be, you know, somebody's gotta do something for 20, 30 minutes.
Right, they can go to the.
It's a marketing opportunity. I mean, a lot of places are capitalizing on it for, you know, cause you've got kind of a captive audience, give them something to do. Healthy Living, for example, has, has, you know, it's perfect.
Maybe we should not worry about standalones until the, the industry gets to a point where it's actually something where you can go in, refuel and leave.
ERA where it actually functions like a gas station.
Maybe that will never come if businesses do this.
Otherwise, it's kinda like a parking lot.
Right.
And they should, right now, be put in parking lots, I think, because that's what you're doing. You're parking your car there for half an hour, at least to, you have to do something to.
I like the idea of the accessory use, and, and that that would incentivize these things to be put as, I mean, makes perfect sense what you were saying, Susanna, about, you know, have, you know, one or two of them at the farms or the, um, the museum. And, uh, yeah, there could be other, other locations. I mean, you know, you wonder like, I don't know, is this a way like one of the churches could make a little bit of extra money or something, you know?
There's a good point.
Yeah, you know, just bring in some revenue, you know?
Empty most of the time.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, you know, you can foresee an app where there's a, you know, location for these things, and they have different kinds, like, um, some of them take longer, and then some of them are, you know, it's probably a bigger investment, you know, to get the souped up technology to do them quickly. Uh, I don't know that much about it, just I have a friend who has a purely electric vehicle, and so she has to kind of think about this. And, um, so I've gotten a little sense of what's involved from her. So, but she does, she did, did mention that issue of, you know, if you are caught, they try and sort of fill up at home, cause they have solar panels and stuff that are dedicated to that, which I think Andrew has done something with his house similar. But if you're caught, it's, it is just out and about to find one of the ones where you can just fill up for half an hour and then have stuff to do is really fantastic.
It's a real draw to any community that's on that path, and I think we would be on that path.
Yeah.
No, I'll mention this anecdotally, cause I didn't confirm numbers, but I was shown, shown an app the other day and given a, a stat, this app that showed charging stations across the country, and, um, there was a big cluster in Vermont, and, uh, and I was told that Vermont had the most charging stations per capita, which I thought was surprising, and I questioned it.
I questioned that too.
Yeah, there, I mean, my gut reaction was, that doesn't sound right. And then the person opened up the app and was zooming in, and they were all over the place. So I'm not sure, I don't know if that's people with extension cords or what, but for what that's worth.
No, they're legitimate stations. I mean, a lot of them are at like the, the auto stores, the, the car sales places. They'll have a couple each. We, we have an electric car, we do that too. And, um, anyway, it's, you find them, and the apps make it really easy where to find them, and what ones are, are operational. And, you know, there's all these things to, you know, when you use it, you say, yeah, it worked great, or it was broken, you know, and somebody goes out and monitors that stuff.
And that's what really piqued my interest, because if, if something like that is true, and my comment was, yeah, last I heard, we also had the most breweries per capita, which is, it's good that other things are there as well, but, um, not that I have anything against breweries. But, uh, that is an interesting talking point that could be referenced in tourist material and that sort of thing. If we did have that kind of an infrastructure, it could draw more people to the area theoretically for shopping and whatnot. All right, uh, so that would be, that certainly another priority, or priority type topic to get on a, when we start diving into.
Do we have to do anything to allow charging stations now to be placed at the drugstore or?
My, my opinion would be that it's accessory to a commercial establishment. You know, we don't, we don't spell out every accessory activity. So I don't think it would be something that the regs would work against, but I think that people promoting this kind of amendment to the regs, you know, they feel like it makes it clearer to people so that they feel comfortable making the investment, because it says right there that they can do it. And there may be, you know, there may be a limit, you know, there, I'm just trying to think of whatever the number would be. If someone's got a busy commercial establishment already, and then they put more of these, I'm just trying to think of what the, what the negative impact would be, but if they had the room to put 16 of them, and that were some kind of negative effect from having 16, cause at some point, those charging might start to dwarf the principal use.
Well, it seemed like allowing somebody to put 16 in would be different, it would be bad for, you know, somebody like a small store or something who wants to put one or two in for convenience. They're not, if they're having to compete with a large facility, then they won't do that.
I don't think there's a competition thing. I think it's, people tend to go where they wanna hang out for a little while. And so if a little store has one, it's gonna get used if people wanna go to that little store.
Right.
If, I, I think where, I, I wouldn't think that it'd be a problem to just put one, anybody to put one, the Shelburne supermarket, anybody to.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I think that it would already be considered accessory. There's a point, you could reach a point where it stops looking like the tail, and it starts looking more like the dog.
But you know, I think that, that's sort of a kinda old school way of thinking about this. I think one of the great advantages, and correct me if I'm wrong, Stephen, is that this sort of liberates you from being stuck in the old model of having to go to a gas station. And there's this huge infrastructure, you know, that's required, and it's a brown field and all this stuff, you know, it's this regulated place that is this massive investment. And, and this is something you can just do much more spontaneously, and I, I guess I'm imagining these things are gonna start sprouting up very serendipitously all over the place.
I don't know if you understood me, Kate, because what I'm saying is, is that I don't think that there would need to be any zoning change for the supermarket to put out some of these charging stations.
So you're thinking like it's a threshold thing, if you wanna do.
I'm just saying that some people. What I was making the point, and I, and I get, we come from different places on this, but at some point, as long as we have the current, the type of zoning that we have, we have this notion of principal uses and accessory. And if we say, yep, you can do this, it's accessory, accessory uses are allowed, at some point, it could flip, and that's when we have to be prepared to have that use allowed in the regs. As a practical matter, I don't think anyone is gonna do that, but there could be a line, which is where having this kind of language, which is being recommended in the regs, would make it clear to people just how much they can have. So I think it would be a good thing, but if somebody walked into my office tomorrow and said they wanted to put, like, I mean, we, gosh, I don't know if we still have one, but there was one, people used to charge off the, one of the powered, yeah, that was different. There's talk about it as part of the library project. Actually, I believe it's part of the plans, and they're going after a grant to do it. That was, that was seen as accessory to the library, there's nothing, no, no separate review for that.
A bigger grant?
How big a grant are they going after? I'm not sure. Could talk to.
What does a charging station cost that can't be overly expensive?
Um, well, yeah, you have to get the power to that parking spot, and how much power, you know, you have to, if you wanna do the high-speed ones, you're talking about, you know, like 60 amps and 220 volts and three phases maybe, and stuff like that. So it can get complicated, or it could just be like a regular outlet, like on the side of the building, which I could plug in to this building, I guess, now that I know that there's an outlet there. But I think the, the limited, the limiting thing, I think, is gonna be like where these charging stations are, like Healthy Living, you can't park there if you don't have an electric car. You know, it's, so it limits the, the amount of parking that they have for people that don't have electric cars.
They should just meter the space, so when, when your power source is turned off, then the meter turns on, so you have to meter or, you know, move a car.
You gotta charge or pay anyway. You pay one way or another.
You keep, you keep paying till you move your car. Unless you're charging, the meter freezes.
The, like, the next step in the charging things, which would come into the zoning regs, would be where like down at the Marble Works in Middlebury, like right in front of American Flatbread, there's a parking structure, or it's really a picnic structure, but I've seen them where you can actually park under them, but the roofs are solar panels. So it's a timber frame with solar panels that's supplying the, you know, a bunch of the power for the three or four charging stations they have in there. And then I would think that if we could make that kind of thing easier to do, you know, for somebody to actually put a covered parking spot that has the solar panels, that's got these charging stations in them, that would be good in some ways. It would open up a whole can of worms in another, you know, way, because that would be putting a structure, you know, a building.
You'd have to have it as an exception. Yeah, you'd have to have it as a, well, Marble Works is privately owned, but you would, if, um, if you're gonna wanna see these things located where they kind of need to be, you would want the language in the regs to make them exempt, exempt from the setbacks, as an example.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, there are some other things that should be addressed so that we don't say, yes, but. You want it to be able to happen where it needs to happen.
I agree, yeah, that's.
Right, which is why going forward with this makes sense. And I, what I heard though is, is that we're not expecting someone to come in. Skip Valley's not gonna come in, buy a piece of land and put just charging, electric charging stations. We'll worry about that later.
All right, solid intro. Let's just move on to the next item, the comprehensive plan topics, starting with the meeting on Tuesday of the Select Board. I made some comments earlier, I think it was, it was a good intro discussion, and their primary feedback was just looking for something from us that would give them an idea of priorities, particularly with respect to budget considerations, so that they can have those things on their radar. Because we do have lots of recommended actions in the plan, they were, they were very positive. They said, hey, it's great that we have all this stuff, but if there's a sense of what we feel the priorities are, that would give them a better sense of what the budget should be geared toward. As I had mentioned, or shared with this commission in a previous meeting, I shared with them as well, that part of that I view as just the, the Planning Commission needs to put together a work plan, and this Planning Commission may not be the same Planning Commission, or likely won't be the same Planning Commission that is working years from now on the same plan. And, and that's where my consideration came from. It got clarified that they, they weren't, they weren't looking for this to be a formal part of the plan in, in any respect, other than a suggestion that, that having the sections, having a, a top three priorities, just shifting them around so at least some of the ones that we view currently as top priorities in a given section would at least be the top recommended actions. And then we could pull from there, I think that has a lot of added benefit, that anybody flipping through the plan, the first ones that you see are gonna be the ones that stick in your mind kind of thing. But separate from that, we, we should start working on some kind of a, a separate document that shows what our priorities are, and if I was reading between the lines, even something that they could have before they get into their budget process, if they didn't say that explicitly.
Yeah, and on that note, um, the capital plan has been worked on, and the Select Board's trying to get it to a point where they can warrant it for public hearing. Last year, it was the first meeting in October when I think Peter Frankenberger came and gave a presentation. By statute, the Planning Commission has to have an opportunity to comment on the draft, CIP. And it has been something where we've looked at the plan and said, here are some things that are capital related, and it hasn't been a too full a discussion, but maybe in light of what the Select Board is saying, the discussion that you have on the capital plan, at least discussion, looking at the capital plan and, you know, seeing the whole thing and spending a little bit of time may help you as a, as a group, get your heads around the task that they're asking you to do. So you can get an idea of, well, oh, those are the kinds of things that are in the capital plan. Now I got a better idea of which things I would pull out of the town plan. So if things go the way I think they will on October 11, that would be an agenda item. So maybe as we get close to that, look at the plan with that lens.
I don't have time.
I mean, it's a lot to expect the commission to have, I mean, I think your idea of a one-pager with the budget implications is a great idea, maybe that will come out of that.
Well, I, I mean, we, we might not be able to say explicit numbers or anything, but to give them an idea of the things that we're viewing as priorities, so that they can have a chance to comment on, yep, well, this is great, and there's just no way we can do that this year, so.
Well, and the capital plan gives you the opportunity to say, well, not this year, six years.
Right, right. And I know, uh.
They don't have to take everything in, out of the town plan, do they, and put it in the capital plan?
No, they don't have to, that's not how it works, it's how it works in some places, but.
So I wonder if.
It just makes intuitive good sense to me to do something like that.
Yeah, my, my main concern in the.
Having long-term goals is part of what planning is, so we may put something in here that we don't really think is gonna happen in five years, but it is a long, so we need to maybe log those as what they are, long-term.
Well, we could have, I think Andrew was talking about the idea of having maybe three in each category, three priorities that could sort of move around in terms of, you know, how well they align with Select Board goals, and, because that's the kind of calculus that is separate from what we do. And, you know, we could, we could, you know, so we would have something that maybe comes into more prominent focus, but it's been identified as a top priority for that particular area. I mean, I, I think that would be something we could do, and that would be in the form of a sort of one-pager.
Yes, my, my, my real concern was if it's gonna have anything. Yes. My, my, my real concern was if it's going to have anything to do with adjusting what the draft looks like, which gets into warning for hearings and that sort of thing, that starts screwing with timelines. So as long as this is a separate exercise.
I would see it very much as a separate exercise.
And, and they, they were good with that. There was a suggestion, though, to, in each section, have some, like a top three being the top three kind of thing, or things that we've been thinking about. And that, that seemed reasonable to me for any of the sections, particularly that worked with committees or that were managed by a particular commissioner, that in going through that process and recalling the discussions to say, yes, these were kind of the hot topics, let's move those to the top, which we might have done anyway, in some cases.
Well, and that would be what informs the one-pager that we ultimately put together.
But the most importantly is if we are going to change the order of any of the recommended actions, I imagine that's something that we would need to do before it becomes part of the formal draft that gets sent that, I mean.
Yeah.
Moving things around may not be a thing, but, right. It would reduce rework down the line.
Right. If you can do it, you should do it before.
Yeah. And to say it out loud, I imagine to not violate open meeting laws, I could just send a BCC email to the Energy Subcommittee for the Energy Section to solicit opinions on what should be prioritized and give them some thoughts and then just arrange them that way and.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything wrong with sending a message out to a committee and saying, this is what needs to be done, and then send your comments to one person. Don't share them across the group, but send them to one person.
That's why it would need to be BCC, because somebody's always going to reply to all, and that generates a discussion.
So we'd ask them to prioritize the recommended actions, and he used a different term, Cherry. And make them actionable items.
Things that are actionable, right.
Right. So actionable, short-term, and basically, yeah, actionable, short-term items with approximate dollar amount is really, I think, what they're curious.
Yeah, dollar amounts are going to be tough.
That's going to be tough.
I know.
I mean, it was also saying, you know, which things would be Planning Commission, which responsibility, which would be Select Board staff, and which things would be, you know, local funding versus grants. I mean, there, you could have a different matrix.
I mean, we, just for some kind of rough benchmark, we could say low, medium, high impact, but not, not know what a.
I just think that the committees would need clear instructions, because they might put something really unattainable as their first, not unattainable, that's not the right word, but something super macro as their first.
Yeah.
I think little, little bite-sized action items that we, that citizens would feel really good about, like, oh, wow, I can see that the town, they said they were going to do that in the town plan, here they are doing it, just like they said they would. Unlike, we heard some feedback of like, well, 20 years ago, we were talking about this and we still haven't done it. So it'd be neat to really, like, make them very small items that you could celebrate over time.
I wonder, though, those comments.
How we're going to get, getting started or something like that. You know, you could kind of call it something like that and, and just, and even present it to committee, whatever, you know, I suppose chairs that you would be contacting about, you know, how, how do you think about how we should get started on this?
Given the timeline, though, there's, I view this as two separate things. One of them is for the purpose of the town plan itself, is just identifying a top three to have those be the top three recommended actions. And it doesn't, there's, it doesn't need to be that, well, if those don't end up being the top three, then somebody's getting canned. It's, it's not that. It's just allowing some idea of, from these discussions, these were the high priorities that we discussed. Separate from that would be the one-pager type of thing that could say.
That what we do with what they suggest, because there's all these sections, and if there's three from each section, that's too many.
Because those top three don't need to be the easiest, most actionable. They just need to be the top three. And then separate from that, we could have in the one-pager here, some, here's what's actionable that we could.
Right. And, and the one-pager being, you know, at this point in time, because it's, because it's a.
Things change.
It's not, yeah, it's, it's not, we're shifting out of aspiration mode into action mode.
Being knowledgeable about, as he mentioned, you know, stormwater is going to be a big priority anyway, you know, being aware of sort of what's current.
And I'm, I'm reasonably confident, and even, even the, the event at the Pizza Galley Center last night, the envisioning Shelburne was really good, and we can comment on that later on, but the, I, I'm, I'm still pretty comfortable, and there was, there was good feedback on those who had seen the draft that had said, you know, there's a lot of really good stuff and we're, we're moving in a good direction. So that, that's all good. And I'm, I'm reasonably confident that the things that are being discussed that people would like to see long-term, that we have in there. But I fully understand and respect what the Select Board is looking at, is, okay, what's actionable? What are the real priorities? Because some sections have 20 recommendations. So things are moving in a positive direction, I would suggest.
Yeah, it's, we had three members on the Select Board after about 20 minutes. That was when we got the third member of the Select Board. And then the fourth came, didn't say much, and then we never heard from Mary. I mean, I would, I would really like to know if Mary has comments, because I'm guessing she would read the plan carefully. And the idea of, I haven't had a chance to follow up with Lee about this, any follow-up session, but I do think that we should try to get the two folks who didn't say very much to acknowledge that they don't have any concerns.
True. I, I would agree with that. And I also, I'll stand pretty firm on if, and we've been saying this pretty consistently, that if people do have any conceptual issues or there's something not in the planned draft that they really want to see, that speak now or forever hold your peace kind of thing. Because once we start getting into this approval process, I would not look at it kindly if somebody says, wait a minute, you have to go back and change this, because there's been, there is plenty of time and opportunity to do that.
And I have one of those that I'll, from the HPDRC.
Wonderful.
We'll talk about it just a little bit.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I, really what I want to do is avoid hamstringing this commission once we were planning on having the draft done, so that we can actually start diving into the work that needs to be done.
So you're going to email committees? And then there's some groups that don't have a committee?
Well, I was just, I was using that as an example with the Energy Committee, because I was liaison to that, but.
I think you and I can talk about what the, what this, how this email's going to be structured, so, and we'll send it to the chairs. We'll figure that out, but we'll need to make sure that they all get it and follow up and know when their meetings are and give them a deadline so that, but it shouldn't, I mean, it's not all you.
I mean.
Right.
No, you're right. I'm a, I'm an optimistic realist, and the realist aspect of this is that I don't feel that we're going to have the feedback that we need to get this into the plan before the final draft is going to be done in, what, two and a half weeks to the Select Board, based on what we were just talking with them about. So.
I think they acknowledge that, though. They, they understand the amount of work that's.
They did. But this is, again, the, the exercise that affects the draft itself is just prioritizing recommended actions. Everything else is separate. It's not part of the plan. So it's just soliciting some kind of a feedback. And, and what we had talked about on this commission, if it wasn't last meeting, it was the one before, about whatever sections we've individually worked on to start thinking about how we might prioritize recommended actions or what those top three might be. We, we had already started talking about that. I would suspect with everything else going on that we might not have gotten that far. I can speak personally, I have not. So that is something that I would encourage, encourage all of us to look at the sections that we spent time with. And perhaps we can have, I don't know if we want to have just a little bit of time on the next agenda to talk through some of those things and maybe just take the temperature of the commission and say, hey, here's, here's our first pass at saying these are the top three. I, of course, I believe that we would have feedback from certain committees and certain natural resources would have an opinion on it. I know that the, the Energy Committee would have an opinion on it. And that's, that's where I was suggesting, just reaching out and getting some soliciting thoughts. But aside from that, it's really just, we can talk through and say, based on our discussions, these were kind of the big, this is the theme that we would want to put forward as our top three. Not that it locks us into anything specifically, but that would inform down the line. All right. And I'm talking too much. Is that good for that? And we can move on to the citizen participation?
I think so.
Excellent.
The package included a slightly modified version of the citizen participation in amending the plan chapter, which is the one that did not get assigned, but was shown in the schedule as something that would be edited after the public input meetings. And so I'm happy to walk people through it. It is in color on the computer. And if, if the group is ultimately okay, or okay with some edits, then we would supply it to Maya to go into the plan as the remaining chapter.
Could I just make a little suggestion for one sentence? Where it says the development of the 2019 comprehensive plan included a multitude of citizen involvement extending for over two years. I would just suggest that, that get changed to included multiple citizen involvement opportunities extending for over two years.
Yeah, I think I wrote it that way once, and then, yeah, it's a totally good, multiple citizen involvement opportunities extending over two years.
And I, and I know that we had discussed this. I think this is good. I had just minimal comments.
Does have the one at the, okay, yeah.
Yeah, there was that one.
I wanted to make sure that that was there.
Right. Which, I'd make that one of the top three. But the, under objection, objections, objectives, the, just from a flow standpoint, and I'm trying to interpret my notes here, the, there was just a grouping thing. Let's see. There is, there are two that are related, like one is citizen involvement, one is business involvement, so just putting those together. So either making number two in the first spot, so that one and three are next to each other, or moving two below three. Is that?
Tell me whatever, yeah, whatever the group decides what the order should be, if you want it to be 1, 3, 2, 4, or, did I hear you right?
Yeah, 1, 3, 2, 4 would work, if that makes sense. Minor stuff. And then if we wanted to start here, because we have this, if there were any strong feelings on priorities, we can knock this one out.
On which one? On the recommended actions?
The top three.
I thought about adding one.
That's the wrong direction, Dick.
I know, I know. But maybe it'll take, I thought that we have eight years between plans, that we should at least take one section of the plan each year, starting out in March, and set it as a goal to review that section or, and by doing that continuously, we will be maybe getting ahead of the ball the next time around. At first, I had said two sections, but maybe we'd, we'd say we'll pick one, and I'm sure others will crop up during the year that we would work on them. But to pick the section that seems to be the most concerned to the commission.
Yeah, this would be the best place to have something like that, wouldn't it?
Yep.
But that means we're, like, looking at this in two years.
No.
One section of it.
Next year, one section of the plan of the 11 sections.
Or one section.
We're only looking at one section, and we, you know, we could spend a half an hour, an hour a month or something, just evaluating to see what we could do to continually be upgrading the plan.
But then, seven years later, that, those edits that we did a year after we just did a major edit, we'd want to look at again. So would that really save?
I think it would.
Time?
Oh, you're talking about the plan itself.
I'm talking about continuing to monitor the plan and.
Oh.
So Dick, would it be, would it be something like, develop a schedule for amending the plan in sections on an annual or biannual basis?
Or just reviewing a section and taking the section that seems to be the most important at that time. Maybe we'd do the same one a couple of times over that eight-year period.
Could I twist that a little bit?
Twist it all you want.
Instead of, instead of actually looking at sections of the plan to update, looking at sections of zoning bylaws and codes to streamline.
We should do that, too.
But to focus. Well, the reason that I would focus more on the latter is because we, we spent the majority of the last year just working on this plan, and we weren't doing a whole lot of actual zoning stuff. And I, I wanted, I'd rather get us to a point where we're spending more time streamlining, improving, helping the interaction with other portions of government versus, because any, any change that we do to the plan gets into having discussions and getting things approved, and then we would have to have a formal amendment if we were to change anything.
Right. What Dick is pointing out is something that a lot of other communities have been starting to talk about or are already doing. Like Burlington, you know, they, they have such a dense and, and, yeah, they have a lot of information in their plan. Now that they're on an eight-year schedule, they realize that they can't go eight years between amendments, so they're doing sections or parts of the plan on an every one or two or three-year basis, so that they are not faced with a huge task come the eighth year. That's a separate concern or need, separate from the one you're talking about, which is figure out how you're going to, you know, what I've said, you know, fewer lines but brighter lines in the zoning regs.
Right.
And I think this would not be a huge consumption of time. It'd be spread out over a year. You'd be looking at one section or maybe two if something came up. But the zoning would be a continuous thing that we'd be working on.
Right. Yeah.
And we may find things, as we change some zoning, that we have to change aspects of the plan as well, in order to make them work together.
We could note them. I mean, as we change the zoning and look at how it conflicts with the comprehensive plan, we could note them to look at whenever we're going to look at.
We've changed zoning in the past and changed the plan at the same time to make them kind of melt.
That makes sense. Yeah.
How, have we done that in the last couple of years?
The last time, yeah, the last time the plan was amended was to incorporate telecom stuff. And that wasn't a real full amendment. It didn't go through the confirmation process. So, so that, that happened after the 2014.
Was that actually an amendment, or, I mean, I know it wasn't a formal amendment, but that was.
It wasn't a formal amendment of the comprehensive plan.
Wait, it wasn't, or it was?
It was. So, so there, like Dick is saying, there have been amendments to the comprehensive plan in the years since 2014. It's just that they have been narrow in scope and they didn't result in the town going through the confirmation process, because they've been really focused. The telecom is the most recent thing that I remember, but it's happened in the, it's happened in the past two or three other times, at least.
So this would be, well, because this isn't something that we would, it's not like we can by statute put this restriction on ourselves. So this would be a recommended action. So it would be something like setting a best practice to address a section of the plan each year?
Yeah, or develop a schedule, say, hey, this is, well, the next eight years, you know, we, we gave a light touch to these sections and maybe we'll deal with those next, because we've just spent a lot of time on natural resources, so natural resources is going to be okay for a while. But I'm trying to think, economic development, maybe you would want to make it one of your next year or two type amendments.
Well, why don't we relate it back to, just because, you know, I, I guess I just worry about, you know, more just sitting around talking about things and not doing. Why don't we relate it back to referenced the priorities that we're developing, and even maybe that one-pager as the guide, you know, sort of bring it back to revisit the priorities on a, on a regular basis. You know, I, I like that, I really like that idea of kind of, you know, the, the town plan is very aspirational, very far-reaching, far-looking, but it's also very remote from the day-to-day. So the top priorities is a way to start to turn that into action items. And that's really what we're talking about, right? So why don't we just kind of make some sort of reference in there?
It's a little bit different from that, in that this is a section that's written to make it clear to the reader that this plan will and can change. It's, it is not going to be fixed. going to be fixed in time until the next deadline, it can be updated, so the go, the change from five years to eight years just makes it, I think, more, it's a bigger task if you have eight years of time and stuff that you need to catch up on, so what towns are doing is saying, hey, let's break it into pieces, and try, it won't be such a shore if all you're doing is one chapter, right? I mean, it's been a lot of work, because you've been doing, doing everything.
Yeah, we're trying to do a chapter every other meeting.
Or more, yeah, I mean, but I, I'm also thinking practically that you, we have, what, 23 meetings a year, if November stays consistent, which we probably won't this year, but...
But don't you think that if we revisit the priority section, or whatever we're going to call it...
Well, but that wouldn't actually be in the plan.
Well, that, that one-pager wouldn't be, but aren't we talking about putting together something that, like, distilling top priorities from...
To have each, yeah, well, roughly to have the top three for each section, top three is rel, is, is relative, and, and I think that's my big hesitation, is that future commissions aren't necessarily this commission, they might have their own work plans, the town status might be, I mean, circumstances might be different, their priorities change, so to that point, yes, but the way, the way that at least I've been explaining the town plan, and nobody's really corrected me on this, is it, it serves as a purpose to the commission anyway, in terms of being able to put together a bylaw change report when we're changing bylaws, so this gives us the ability to have teeth to the things that we're trying to get passed, so that when the select board gets that bylaw change report, they can say, okay, well, all of this, all of these references in the town plan support the change that you're trying to make, therefore, we're more likely to approve this thing. So, from, from, the, the priority of the recommended actions realistically is, from my perspective, is fairly irrelevant, which is why they're, why I was asking the, the select board to clarify that this isn't something, they didn't necessarily want the plan prioritized itself, because that can change over time, but this one-pager would be separate, and that, that's why I'm just a little, I very much appreciate the idea of continuously updating the plan, so you don't hit eight years from now, wow, and have to do a lot more than what we just went through, I, I really get that, I'm just trying to think of the, one section E, I, I mean, we, it wouldn't force anybody to do it, it would just be setting a best practice.
No, you open up and say which section, you have your organization meeting in March, and you just say, well, what section would we like to tackle this year, or to take a look at, and somebody may have an idea and bring it up, and sell it to the rest of the commission, that this is something we should fix, and you just set up a little very light schedule to take care of that, and maybe the public will bring something to our attention that...
So, like, so having a recommended action saying something like, recommend that the commission pick a meeting in March to discuss selecting a particular section of the plan to review and make any appropriate updates?
Something to that effect, yeah.
Yeah, I like that idea, I think my resistance was just that it's not something you can enforce, it's going to be something that the commission just may or may not do, so it's a best practice that we just need to establish and keep that thread moving forward through future commissions, and this wouldn't be the section I suppose to have that recommended action.
And going eight years between plans, you know, Kate and I were, sat through a couple of plans now, so, I don't know if that helped or hurt, but either way, that, with eight years to go, it may be that none of us will be here, so it's not a bad idea to have people that are coming into the commission to work on a plan.
But, I mean, I'm, I'm not really favor, in favor of, like, continuing this process, like, constantly...
Wouldn't be this process, but it would be evaluating something that we think is troublesome in the plan, we'd be taking care of an issue, not the whole, we wouldn't be rewriting a whole section, we'd just be evaluating a section at a time over the years.
But then, when it came time to actually vote on that, and to present it as a document after eight years, it would be a different group of people, and so, you know, like, the committee, if it's all of us, or a select committee of us, six years before that edited the transportation, like, section, in, like, the seventh year, if I were new to the planning commission, I would say, well, let's have a look at that, you know, we haven't looked at that ever. Yeah, so, it would mean, looking at it again and again and again, as the, as...
I don't think you keep looking at it.
The makeup of the, of the planning commission changes.
So, this is why I was suggesting that you could have wording like, develop a schedule for amending the plan in sections every one to two years, because what happens if you do that is you say, okay, there is one section, let's say economic development, that could use some work, you do that work, the plan is amended, you can't ignore the fact that it was amended, so if there's an entirely new planning commission that comes into, you know, takes your place a year after, it's not likely that they're going to feel the need to redo the economic development section, it will have been done, so then they'll be looking around and saying, well, what's, what's another thing, but maybe your schedule has set the next three, but you've done only one, but if you happen to have a whole new group, they get their own opportunity to revise the schedule or carry through with it.
And get familiar with the plan.
One piece at a time, huh?
It's either, it's either that, or just say that, you know, as part of preparing an annual work pla, as part of preparing an annual work plan, identify a section or sections of the plan to update.
And that does facilitate the practical matter of, I did, because I'm a nerd sometimes, but most new planning commissioners, I would assume, don't just sit down and read the plan, it, it's more, you, you volunteer for the spot, you, you hop on the commission, and then as the relevant sections come up in the course of trying to change bylaws, you reference those sections, but doing something like this would make the plan more of an active part of something that people would just be familiar with, who, we're obviously very familiar with it now, because we just went through a whole revision, but the next person that joins the commission after this new plan is in place, they won't have that history, so having something like this would facilitate more exposure of the plan and keep it more on the front burner than the back.
I'm coming around, Don.
I think I am, too. So, what, how, how was it that you were phrasing that, Dean?
Well, I had two different approaches, one was develop a schedule for amending the plan in sections every one to two years, that would be a recommended action, you'd know when you met it, you've developed a schedule, or you say something like, as part of preparing an annual work pla, as part of preparing an annual work plan, identify a section or sections of the plan to update, or something else entirely.
Yeah, I could go with either one of them.
Can you read the first one again, Dean?
Develop a schedule for amending the plan in sections every one to two years.
I like that one. I was going to like the second one. Kate, do you, there, there's a line, more stronger, with what you were thinking?
Yeah, I think that works fine, I just want to, I just want there to be something, you know, kind of purposeful and decisive about what we're doing, so it's not just endlessly talking about stuff, because there's just so many things that were, we set up, we spent a lot of time, and I, I think very effectively have set up in this town plan a framework for action-taking, and I want to take action, you know, so, we have work to do.
And I'm also colored, I'm, I'm not, I'm really not trying to be obstinate at all or create problems, I'm, but I, I've been, I've chatted with several residents, business owners, and there was a lot of that last night as well, and there, there seems to be a common theme that there's just a lot, there's a lot to consider, and, and that's, Dean, you made it, the, the phrase you used was, what, fewer, fewer lines but stronger lines?
Fewer lines but brighter lines.
Brighter, yeah, that, that is what, the feedback that I've been hearing, that's what people are looking for, and, and I completely understand how things grow over time, because that's, it's easier to add on than to go back and streamline, but...
So, maybe there's an even simpler version, that's something like, update the plan in sections as appropriate.
Yeah, which is kind of what we do all the time, anyway, right?
But you're recognizing what Dick's idea was.
It's not saying, it's not saying that we should be doing something on an annual basis.
But I, I get that, but...
It's, I think, important.
Yeah, well, and that's why either having it as part of the annual work plan, or having, that, that would at least force it associated with an exercise that every board is going to do, every board is going to come up with a work plan, and if they don't, then that's not good, but, so, I think that's why I was gravitating more there, because it's something tangible, unless the, the other option of revisiting the plan every one to two years, that there's a particular time of year or something where that gets into people's minds, and we know, okay, well, hey, in the spring, we need to have a meeting to really look at this. Work plans are generally annual, right?
Work plans are generally what?
Annual.
Well, yeah, and, and it's been a while...
Except for this past year.
There have been so many different variations of, of, of work plan setting, but yes, I mean, you've been all absorbed in the plan, so you haven't done that, but a couple few years ago, there were some pretty elaborate exercises that the planning commission used to come up with the tasks for the year.
Yeah, I'd almost want to define a framework for developing a work plan or something, thinking of future commissions that...
I wouldn't be too detailed about it, just because there have been so many different takes on it.
Right, yeah, true.
I mean, I think if you say something, deal with it annually, you know, or an annual work plan, they'll decide at that time how they're going to do it.
So, it sounds like it makes sense to say, I think that's why I liked the first one that Dean mentioned, because it, it says specifically on an annual basis, or something like that.
The second one was annual, the first one was one to two years, and that, to me, injected enough gray area for somebody to say, oh, yeah, let's do that next year.
Okay, then, yeah, annually, would be good.
Well, develop a schedule annually for amending the plan in sections every one to two years.
Ah, okay. Yeah, then I'm fairly neutral.
Because there may be something that takes to your side of it.
Right.
Well, either, and we've got that monster thing up north, that, you know, hopefully we can use a springboard with the grant to, we're going to be working, I hope, on four base zoning, I'd like to see that.
Monster thing up north, is that what you said?
More base zoning. To me, that's, I think that's, should be one of our key projects.
There's probably four that are fighting for equal number-one spot, that, that I'm hearing, but yeah, all right, so we're, yeah, do, do either one of those really jump out at anybody to just go with, because...
I like the annual mention.
Yeah, me too, and it seems like, though, if it's annual, we shouldn't say every one to two years, in addition to annual, like, make the plan annual to look at them every one to two years.
It's like a wellness visit.
Yeah, but then that gets back into, just make it part of the work plan process, because technically you'd be doing that every year.
Yeah.
We just need to make sure that Mary Ann hears it can do it in the minutes, and...
Annually, how about annually, is everybody okay with annually?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Revisit the plan annually.
So, so annually, so is that meaning inserting annually and developing a sched, develop a schedule annually for amending the plan in sections every one to two years, or does that mean as part of preparing an annual work plan, identify a section or sections of the plan to update, number one, or number two?
I, I'll, I'll defer on this.
Well, number one sounds better, you say annual, and you don't say one to two years, I think, you can't say both.
Okay, okay, got it, got it, so develop a schedule annually for amending the plan in sections, boom.
Yes, I like that.
Going once?
Love it.
Going twice, gone.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Okay, so that's going to be added.
Tremendous.
So, with that addition, is it ready to be sent to, to Maya?
Yes.
Okay, so the next agenda item, being mindful of the time...
Yep.
Has to do with...
The appendices?
Appendices, document production and mapping, and I mentioned in the memo, something about a statement regarding compatibility, and when the town plan is in two volumes, as it is today, the very last chapter of volume two looks quite a bit like what I have drafted and redrafted as a separate document, just basically something that would be attached as an appendix, but I do, it, it's required by statute, and I'm realizing that I may also need to put in a paragraph having to do with the regional plan, but I wanted people to be exposed to this kind of thing, and understand that it will need to be part of the plan in some fashion, I'm not suggesting that we give it to Maya, but I do think that if the commission is open to the idea of saying that, yep, these are, these are appendices, and this will be one of them, or something like this, then we would keep, we would keep going down that road and have a list of things.
I, going through that, I kind of, well, kind of depends on where it puts us in terms of number of pages and that sort of thing, I would say that...
This is over the...
Yeah, then to the appendix it goes, but, yeah, I think something like this is good, it shows that there's relationships and...
Yeah, like I said, it is, it's required by statute, it is kind of interesting to take a look, to see what the other towns around us are doing, if you haven't done that.
So, if it is required...
I read through this, and I pretty much agree with what's here.
Yeah, it's interesting, I did get in touch with the Williston planner, because they've, they inadvertently left out mention of Shelburne, it's kind of...
They have a pretty tiny line, now we're in a fight with Williston.
And, and in fact, this map, I kind of cobbled together, I have a new version, but in their official future land use map, they have the, the legend over that part of the boundary, you can't even see where Williston touches Shelburne, it's like, that's how much they care, I thought.
That would be awesome.
Geez, Matt!
Is that, is that still Matt?
So, there's a new Williston future land use map that has this, the legend smaller, so that you can actually see the part of Williston next to Shelburne.
Can we block him from riding his bike in Shelburne, then, when he has to cross that little stretch at all?
I think we should propose that.
They have a public comment section at some point, right?
Where, historically, the, the community where there's been the most time spent looking at this has been South Burlington, there's quite a bit more material in the, in the version of this document in the last two plans, it just felt like it wasn't, it went further than we really needed to, but, South Burlington's future land use map is also very different from the others with that kind of heat map type appearance.
That's their map?
Yeah, it's, this is what, their, their future land use map is very blobby, this heat map type appearance.
That should be on, they've added, what, 3,000 houses in the last six or seven years?
I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but they've added quite a bit.
No, that was the original plan, and I think it's increased.
So, again, the basic idea is for people to understand there is the requirement in statute for this section, and that if it's okay, then we would just have it in a little table of things that may get bigger before you actually decide to warn the public hearing, and the next thing I'm going to talk about could be a second thing.
And that, because this is required by statute, that it doesn't have to physically be in the...
Correct, it could be, it could be, I believe, it can be an appendix to the plan, and as long as it goes through the adoption process, it's, it's, it's covered.
Okay.
It could just be attached to the map section that doesn't make the plan, or should that be a separate?
Conceivably, I mean, we, we'll have some options as far as binding, but I don't know that many people are going to be looking at paper copies of these things, you know, three or four years down the road. So, another item that I think I talked about at the very earliest stages of the plan update process was what some people will call a community profile, and I had used some different sources for community profiles, and I mentioned in the packet that there are a couple of new interesting websites, one of them is, it's maintained by Housing Vermont, right? No, it's by, yeah, it's Housing Vermont, housingdata.org, that's where some of these charts come from, it's really just the idea of having some basic data profile, this first page is what they call the snapshot, it's, it is a basic reference comparing Shelburne to the state of Vermont in terms of income and population and households. to the state of Vermont in terms of income and population and households and stuff like that. I included some additional items that would be, I just did screenshots, basically, but what's the population been in Shelburne over the last many, many years? I have a version of this that actually also includes Williston, South Burlington, so we could see how our, how our community has grown compared to our neighbors, so that something, but the basic idea is, does the commission want, can it go along with the idea of some kind of profile?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I like that part of the current volume two.
Okay, and then.
Right, the bummer is that it's static, when you grab it, it'll be static.
Right, but we're, but but we're doing this really to just make sure that that checkbox can be checked, we're instead gonna, well, or in addition, we'll have the link, everyone's going to use the housing.org community profile. Okay, and then there's also a new website that VNRC has created that uses different data, a lot of it is parcel data and grand list data, where you can see trends in land use and parcels and subdivision. That's where this particular graphic, as an example, comes from. So looking at land value per acre, now unfortunately. Yeah, there's some weird data things, this is, this is, basically, this website is still being being rolled out, but I wanted to give you some idea.
So that's not really a meaningful graph?
I, that particular, right, the data for Williston, I haven't had a chance to email them and say, hey, fix the data for Williston.
Land value is zero.
So this is land value per acre?
Yes, this is land value in dollars per acre.
And which one is Shelburne?
Shelburne, South Burlington is red, Shelburne is this here. Williston drops through the floor, Charlotte.
Well, it's because they cut us out.
Heinzburg, which is kind of surprising.
Could you go up one just for a second? I was doing my best to withhold asking data questions, but the next one, I'm sorry, down, the one right before the line graph that we were just looking at.
This one?
Yes, the, I was curious, that last, the 200-plus acres, the fact that that didn't change from 2010 to 2016, does that mean that in the last, in a six-year period, there were no parcels less than 200 acres that were subdivided?
So this particular chart was number of acres by parcel size. So this is the number of acres that are in parcels over 200, so you have places like Meach Cove, Shelburne Farms, you don't have a lot of property that are over 200 acres, but they did not in fact change. So we have Shelburne Farms, Meach, Webster, those haven't been subdivided.
Oh, because that is Shelburne specific, right?
Yeah, this is Shelburne specific.
Got it, yep.
Yeah, in some places, you know, what VNRC is doing on a statewide basis is looking at parcelization trends, and when they look statewide, they see a lot of these places where the number of 200-plus acre parcels and the land in 200-plus acre parcels is dropping, and that's a source of concern because the use will change more likely when it's a smaller parcel.
Right.
So is there, would it be worth it to have a little bit of description about what this indicates? You know, like that these are, this is an indication of, you know, changes in in a certain kind of land use, or, I don't know.
Yeah, it would be, but I don't think that, the purpose is not to create a, an analysis for the purposes of the appendix, I think that, I mean, essentially what volume two does or has done historically is have that analysis, but it takes time to do that, and we just don't have the time to do it.
Okay.
But had we decided to do a volume two, then we would have had something like that for whatever charts we included in it.
Okay.
Which isn't to say that someone won't produce an analysis to go along with charts like this that we could incorporate.
This parcelization website, where do these numbers come from? Is this every acre?
It's statewide, using grand list data for all the towns in the state.
So this would be every acre undeveloped ten.
Yeah, it's all, whatever's on the grand list in every community in the state. It's, it was a ton of work from, as I can tell.
And what on the last chart, what is percent UVA acres?
The last chart.
I know it's not the Cavaliers.
Oh, okay, yeah. That's use value appraisal. So seeing a decrease in the enrollment and use value appraisal is another thing that would give community sources of concern because they would see land, I mean, this is the kind of stuff that the natural resources committee talks about somewhat more regularly, but a decline in land and use value appraisal would suggest that that land could convert.
So like not in current use, or is that what?
Yeah, use value appraisal is, yeah, current use is the kind of layperson's phrase for the use value appraisal.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this is great.
And and the other thing about this particular chart is, is that getting a handle, if there's a lot of enrollment and use value appraisal, people may put a higher value on enrollment when it's Vermont residents as opposed to corporations, people may feel that if it's in corporate ownership, it may be, and I don't know if the data backs this up, but people may be concerned that corporate ownership and enrollment is really about just getting the tax break, but when the markets change and if there's a market to disenroll and develop, then maybe that will happen, but this breaks it, this takes all of the enrollment and puts it in these categories so that you can see that in terms of Shelburne, it's gone between 2004 and 2016, I guess it was, there was an increase in the Vermont residents, non-resident enrollment went down. I don't know if that means people moved, because the numbers are about the same, I don't know if these non-residents bought properties, they enrolled, and then they moved and they became residents, or whether or not the non-residents just decided that they were going to sell, they're going to unroll, and just happened to be offset. My guess is it may be people moving and settling, but I don't know for sure. So the idea again was just understanding that when there's a package put together to be warned for public hearing, it could include these these types of documents. Appendices, document production and mapping, I believe you've been provided with links to the maps in the past, the PADS committee map is really the only map that has not been updated, they are very close to having a version that they would have ready for public distribution. I say that based on emails I've traded with Kevin as recently as today. In terms of document production, though, there are still some places for images, we also, I also got some feedback from someone this morning who felt like, oh, there are a lot of the photos are Shelburne Farms photos, and they felt like there should be more non-Shelburne Farms photos.
Did they have non-Shelburne Farms photos?
They did, yeah. And so they did in fact supply eight or nine photos. I don't know if they'll work for Maya, but some of them might. Do you want to talk more about the holes to be filled? Lee has said that he thought he had some more photos, I.
The real, real gap is in the energy section, and I feel stumped.
But I thought Lee said that he had some.
He did say that he had some.
Picture of the farm.
Well, we've got solar, we've got loads of solar, but there's still like maybe four empty spots, and.
And she needs one for for the different sources.
Yeah, I thought we could put in a picture of a charging station, but that isn't, yeah, doesn't exist.
Wiki Commons or something.
Great to have.
Station, sure, weakening dependence.
Yeah, that didn't even occur to me, gosh, yeah.
So basically, it means that between now and the next meeting, if we're going to get across the finish line and have something that the group feels like this can be warned for public hearing, it's going to either have those photo holes filled, or you're going to be confident that they'll be filled within a day or two of the next meeting, or you'll be prepared to warn it for public hearing with a hole.
Is, I mean, does, well, is that a, is that a technicality of a picture?
I kind of think of it as just a technicality, but.
I mean, if there's places I can go out to, I mean, if you have ideas, I'll go as long as it's not trespassing. I don't know if we, I don't know, I'm not aware of wind turbines and.
There.
Potentially would have been one on the point.
There's a small wind turbine over off of, yeah, well, at least I believe they're still there, near the localizer between Spear and Dorset, so as you're driving north on Dorset Street, on your left, is that weird airport beacon thing?
I think that one's gone.
That one's gone? Okay, well, then further south, does Frank Cole still have his? He went out to solar. That guy got.
Well, so if it's that hard to think of them, maybe that wouldn't be a good illustration of potential, but.
It's it's tough, because on the energy side, the wind potential dwarfs the solar potential.
What about a picture of one of those cute little micro wind things that it seems always talking about?
Like, does the spot have one?
Yeah, I mean, that would be, but.
Do we want to have a South Burlington picture in our plan?
If we don't have, then Shelburne.
That's true, I mean, they definitely do have that one, that I think they got wrist slapped for it at one point, didn't they?
Yeah. Well, one of the things that's cool about that is it's kind of incorporated into the sign.
It is.
Which would be perfect for Route Seven, you know? I mean, it's really loud there, I mean, who's going to care if we have signs that are also wind turbines, you know, it's kind of neat.
I think that'd be great.
And anybody on the energy committee that you can think of who.
I can, that's a good point, yeah, I did not do that before, I can send out a note.
Yeah.
Besides that, I think we'll probably be in okay shape.
How come we couldn't convince the school to put solar?
Because I think, you know, there could be some benefit to showing sort of opportunistic small-scale wind or rather than industrial wind, even if it's from other places, you know, like it sort of signals, we're open to these kinds of interesting things here, this is the type of thing we like, we have in mind versus, you know, something kind of really massive. Because you're right, I mean, with the amount of wind, if it's in the right spot and it's done the right way, that could really.
I mean.
Contribute.
Picture of a windsock or a keeled over sailboat just to indicate we have wind.
There you go, yeah.
Well, that wouldn't be hard, okay.
Just to encourage the concept, because there seems to be.
Well, that, you know, you could call the energy section and you could show.
They do, in, yeah, in the Shelburne mornings, there was one that had that, yeah.
Little roof that's everybody's got.
Yeah.
Send me out and stuff some craziness.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Shelburne Bay Harbor, town mornings.
I'll row out there and take a picture of, find the boat that has.
I'll see, well, now that it's getting like they might be in.
Yeah, it might be cool.
Right.
Oh, but a picture, maybe on, are they still doing Wednesday night series? There's a beautiful race, they had all the spinakers up over the past weekend.
Yeah, that I can easily get a hold of.
Somebody from LCYC might have some pictures, too.
I mentioned that there were, there was a suggested edit made by the historic preservation and review commission. So I've got up on the screen or on the wall, the text that they have come up with, there is a recommended action number six that reads, as you can see there, consider regulatory and non-regulatory techniques and strategies to incentivize historic preservation in the historic village center. The group met this morning and they adopted a motion that basically empowered the chair, the vice chair, and one other person to come up with language on behalf of the committee, and so it didn't happen in the in the context, but the language that's below is what I was handed. And so it reads, through zoning regulation, develop incentives for preservation, restoration and renovation of historic resources to discourage demolition. I am frankly not sure whether or not it's meant to replace six or to be in addition to six, but I do think there's a lot of overlap between the two, since it talks about regulatory techniques to incentivize historic preservation. But I know that it was very important to them because there was some discussion before they adopted the motion, that the language say.
To discourage.
Incentives for preservation, restoration and renovation, and they wanted it to be clear that it was to discourage demolition. So my hunch is they would like to see six replaced, but if it's replaced, then it leaves out non-regulatory techniques. So maybe you'd say, consider non-regulatory techniques and strategies to incentivize historic preservation, and then have through zoning regulations, develop incentives, blah, blah, blah. And I do have, yeah, I mean, I've got paper copies of this as well.
I would be in favor of that, the latter merging.
Merging?
Just to include non-regulatory in there as well so that we don't limit ourselves.
So, so maybe, yeah.
Not that we couldn't do non-regulatory things anyway, but.
Well, so you'd say something like through zoning regulation and non-regulatory techniques, develop incentives for preservation, blah, 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 blah. You just insert the non-regulatory.
To me, that would be the same as regulatory, so it's kind of a.
It's through both, it's, that's what.
Or through non-regulatory techniques and through zoning regulation?
Yeah.
Just to be able.
I don't, what would be meant by non-regulatory techniques, some kind of?
It would be basically a financial incentive or a density incentive or something like that. The density would arguably be a zoning thing, but, yeah, it would be.
How about through zoning regulation and incentives?
Through zoning regulation and non-regulatory techniques, develop incentives for?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think they would be okay with that. So through zoning regulation and non-regulatory techniques, develop incentives for preservation, restoration and renovation of historic resources to discourage demolition.
Yeah, I would almost say, sorry, historic resources and discourage demolition. Because you.
Right.
To the end?
Because, yeah, because you would still want, right.
Someone may not be choosing between demolishing and not demolishing, they may just be thinking about some preservation as opposed to not, so I don't know, it just seems it is more inclusive.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Agreed.
So.
You okay with that?
Yep. If if there is that, then we can, we can include that.
Yep.
Okay. I did also, I got an email from Kate so that she could have access to the document to edit the future land use. I was thinking so much about the comments that I'd heard at the select board meeting, though, I had noodled with one of the points that I heard made, which would be a change that was in the future land use section. It's this idea that there is a proposed proposal to change the maps so that the planning areas' maps have conservation on them now, but they didn't before. We currently have objective two that you can read, but there's no mention of conservation, but it does say the growth area is divided into two sections, growth area one, the village, growth area two, and I'm wondering whether or not the the need that Jerry identified would be addressed by adding the last sentence. Now, maybe, Kate, this is what you were working on?
Oh, well.
Or were you working on a different thing?
I, I was just starting, I was going to put together, put the, incorporate some of the comments that were made at the public meeting into the future land use.
So this was, yeah, because I was focused on making sure that Jerry's comment was addressed, so then it would, it just struck me that objective two was a place where we could say, because it's, it's the beginning part of the future land use section where we'd have this connection, these growth areas, as well as the surrounding rural area, are interspersed with designated conservation areas, we hadn't mentioned conservation areas in the plan, in that chapter up to that point, based on mapping contained in the natural resources section, and there's the reference to that map five, which is where the green areas come from.
Yeah, that makes some sense.
That makes sense, yeah.
Can you, can you just send that to me? That'd be great, thanks.
Were there any?
I don't really understand that, but if you guys are good with it, I'm good with it.
It was really just calling out, I think, that whereas the objective just talks about the growth area itself, it's just pointing out that there are conservation areas worked in there, is how I I look at it, so that somebody couldn't say, well, it says growth area one is this, so we should be able to build here, but if there's a conservation area. Is how I, I look at it. So that somebody couldn't say, well, it says growth area one is this, so we should be able to build here, but if there's a conservation area. Couldn't, right?
Yeah, it, um.
How about making it more active and say interspersed within these growth areas and the surrounding rural area.
Oops, sorry.
Our designated conservation areas.
And the surrounding rural area, is that what you said? Are?
Are conservation, um, areas.
Whoops, I already have that.
Are designated conservation areas.
And then you want to say, if you want to shorten the sentence period, these areas are based on mapping contained in, does that help?
Yeah, I think that breaking it up is better.
You could even say see.
Yeah, refer to natural resources, chapter, whatever, maps or something in there.
These are based on mapping?
Well, how about just refer to maps contained in this natural resources?
Map five and.
To map five, yeah. And then just get rid of contained in, just say in.
Uh, contained, 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 contained.
That, that last side.
Yeah, just to.
Refer to map five in the natural.
Oh, yeah. Okay, that makes sense. Okay.
Great. And then if you can just send that to me, I'll, um, have time tomorrow to work on some of those changes.
How are, so are you working in a text document that Maya will then re-dump into the design piece?
Yeah, Kate had originally asked me about the online doc, but the thing that I knew was, well, let's work with what I sent her. Now, I'm not sure if there were any edits Andrew made, but it seemed like it was the closest thing.
I haven't had a chance to open it yet, so I don't really know what it's gonna look like. But Dean suggested that I do things in red, just so that it's clear where I've.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I mean, I think, um, so one question I guess I have is that, is the stuff that Kate's going to be editing to reflect the comments. I'm, I'm having a blank here. That was all resolved, so there's no bringing that text back to the commission before it goes to Maya? Or is there?
I think it was, it, I, well, I don't know if we were really clear about that. Um, I can do, can do whatever.
Yeah, I'm just drawing a blank.
We sort of, we sort of looked through it and then it was sort of, you know, Kate, will you do this? And I said, yes. And so. Drag this up to you guys if you're.
I mean, I've already sent you a document that has.
It was kind of just synthesizing the comments in, so if you guys are okay with my doing that.
Just be curious to see it, but.
Okay.
Yeah, just.
Okay. So I'll send you this, in terms of redline, there's no, yeah, I mean, there's, if, if it doesn't come back to the group, there's really no reason to redline. Because Maya's just gonna drop it in.
Okay, alright.
I'll send this version of the document.
Well, it was, I mean, it was based on comments that were in the, you know, submitted by members of the, of the public, which we sort of vetted.
Yep.
Um, I, I guess it would be, the, the degree of oversight would be how well did I, you know, represent that?
Well, and that's, I guess, the question. Will it, yeah, where does it go?
The only question I had on the whole thing was, the gentleman brought up the cultural.
Yeah.
Portion. And do we do anything that restricts culture in the rural district, really?
It's not that it, it wasn't a restriction, it was more the concept of being able to build a center and I think that ran afoul of.
I thought it was more in line with, well, I honestly don't know what it was.
Well, I think, I, I mean, judging from what the minutes said. It seems like it's to promote something other than just farm-based stuff on a big rural property. That it could be cultural as well.
Yeah, someone, someone at the meeting had a very concise suggestion for incorporating it.
Yeah.
It seemed like it worked and it was just one or two words in an existing policy.
Yeah, well.
I think it makes sense to have something like that.
Do you have? Jonathan Harris was the.
I, I'm assuming, I, I'm assuming I have all that, um, somewhere in a pile in my office.
I think, I think it was part of the packet that was sent at, for the first meeting of this month. Where all of the comments from people at the meeting were summarized.
Okay, if I don't have that in real life, I have it online.
It was the woman, a woman who lives on Bay Road. I'm drawing a blank. She's, I think, a professor at U V M. She had, I believe she had the suggestion. So we should be able to find it in the minutes, where she had suggested something that addressed this cultural resource comment made by Jonathan.
Oh, okay.
And, and if nothing else, from a review standpoint, even if you just wanted another set of eyes or something, if there's time next week or something, just to have a quick call. Like send out a document or something and then, as long as we don't have a quorum, we could.
Is it the kind of thing, Dean, that, that you could send out? Or would that be getting into public, uh, meeting law issues?
Well, can distribute it and people can, it can go out to everybody and everybody can make their comments to one person. I think that's okay.
Okay.
If you have any comments, only send them to Kate.
Yeah, would that work? Just to, just to, just in the interest of moving this along? Yeah, okay.
So, schedule?
Schedule.
So this is the schedule that is, um. Where things are right now. Um, if we get, if, if we'd had the bike pad map, we could say that the maps are finalized for the draft version. For the designed version, Pam is working on the additional maps that will go in the map volume. Um, but this has us pointing towards having things ready or within sight at the end of the next meeting. So that you could say, okay, there's agreement, you know, ninety-nine percent of it's here, the one percent of it that's not here. We know what it looks like and so it will be inserted. Uh, we'll warn a public hearing using that material and that public hearing will take place on the thirteenth.
That's a P C hearing?
Uh, well, the fifteenth, I still haven't updated this, but the, the, right, this date is still mistaken, but it should be the fifteenth.
November meeting dates are not the eighteen, eighth and twenty-second?
Right, that was gonna be another thing, cause there's five Thursdays and technically the second Thursday is the eighth.
Right, so, yeah.
Which I didn't realize either that the.
Well, in any event, it would be, um, it would be that, that second meeting and Thursday, and second Thursday. Which is the first meeting in November, unless you make an adjustment account. I think the thirteenth of that, that third week came in. Because of the possibility of meeting on the third and the fifth, which would meet, have you meet twice in November and get around the problem of Thanksgiving.
Which would be the fifteenth and the twenty-ninth.
Yep.
Yeah.
So what, you may be, great discussion now, when do you want to meet in November?
Right.
That would be better, cause I can't come on the eighth, but.
So. It's all about you. Do we do the, uh, is the fifteenth and twenty-ninth manageable?
Pretty unlikely to be here on the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
Twenty-ninth is not good for me.
Well, the twenty-ninth is, is less of an issue because, I mean, if.
Then that would be.
Yeah, I mean, if, if things fall into place, the twenty-ninth really only becomes important is if you're not at a point. At the first meeting in of October where you can warn.
Right.
For the fifteenth.
So it really puts the emphasis on, you, you couldn't do the eighth, so it really put the emphasis on the fifteenth.
Yeah.
Do, I mean, would we have a quorum on the fifteenth?
November fifteenth.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
I'll be there, I think.
So can, I'm sorry, can you repeat? So what, what would our November opportunities slash obligation be?
Fifteenth and twenty-ninth.
Eleven fifteen and eleven twenty.
And the twenty-ninth might be a quorum issue.
Yeah, well, the fifteenth, so do you want to try the first and the fifteenth?
Uh, do that, slim chance I won't be here on the first. But it's not about me.
Actually, in this case it.
So the fifteenth is the really critical day.
Right, so it seems like.
Yeah, I mean, the fifteenth is the critical date and if you meet only once, as long as you've had the hearing, you know, November's a win.
Uh, I'll, I'd take that. So maybe a, a note out just to remind everybody, cause I know, I knew Aseem wasn't gonna be here today. But I don't know what that looks like. I just want to make sure that we would have a quorum because last year that was a mess.
This is, this is when? The, on the thirteenth?
Oh, the fifteenth.
Yeah, that, thirteen should be.
Yeah, sorry, the fifteenth. Yeah, I can, I'll be here.
I'll be here.
All right, so it sounds like at least those of us here tonight sound like we would be here on the fifteenth, so then we would have a quorum. So, yeah, let's focus in on that and then. To, to have a meeting, it just needs to be warned, what?
Two, forty-eight hours.
Okay.
For, for a special meeting, it could be forty-eight hours.
So when are we meeting, meeting in November? Are we meeting the previous week too? Or?
Sounds, sounds like the first wouldn't work for the.
Well, I, I mean, I might not be able to make the first, Suzanne might not be able to make the eighth.
Or eight and the fifteenth?
What's that?
Eighth and the fifteenth, but I don't know if there's anything to be gained by.
It, right, and that's why I was asking about the warning, because as we get into our next meeting and we see how things shape up, if we need to eject something, maybe we.
But we'll need to know for the publication of the, the legal notice for the hearing.
That should focus on the fifteenth.
That'll be all about.
Regardless, yeah. Okay, so a public hearing on the fifteenth, possibly a meeting before that.
Was the eighth? Was everybody else supposed to be on the eighth?
Uh, Suzanne is out.
But I was just wondering, I was mostly just questioning it because that date wasn't originally.
Right, technically the second and the fourth would be the eighth and the twenty-second, but the twenty-second is Thanksgiving, yeah. Yeah, I might do that too. Yeah, so we'll focus on the fifteenth as an absolute meeting and then that's what our target is for warning the public hearing. Um, and then depending on how things go over the next few weeks, we can decide if we want to try and squeeze in the first or the eighth, depending on.
Yeah.
If there's a need.
Yeah, there, there will be a.
Check forms before doing that.
Yeah, we'll have to, uh, just get it done on the eleventh.
Right. Cause we have the eleventh and then, right, well, the eleventh, that's when everything would have to be done.
Be about having a document that you can say, this is our hearing draft, or this is our hearing draft. It'll be supplemented with document A, document B, we all know what that looks like, the world knows what it looks like. You can do that. And then I will just need to be able to go get A and B, whatever they, those are, so that at the time that it's noticed. Someone would walk in and say, well, where's document A? I'd say, here it is. Where's everything else? Here it is.
Right, right. Okay. That seems reasonably competent enough-ish.
Okay.
Then, all right, home stretch planning grant? That got submitted?
Uh, hasn't been submitted yet, but it's basically all done. I have to sort of pull one switch and then Lee has to do another switch and. Um, then it's submitted, but it's all, it's all uploaded.
Great.
Um, the future grant opportunities was something that, um, we wanted to just mention because the MPG is not the only grant application. That is, um, you know, out there, there's certainly others, and I had included in the packets, one that had been, um, floating around before.
The animated infrastructure?
What's that? Did I include it in the packet? Or I mentioned, oh, yeah, the animating infrastructure, the public art grant, this is something.
Oh.
That we have talked about briefly.
That'd be great.
Um, and, um, you know, I think as a practical matter, it's probably easier to get one of those grants. When you're talking about a facility like the library than it is to say, hey, let's convince V trions to get, you know, get eleven eleven permit to do something in the right of way. But, I mean, that could happen, it just would be more work. Um, but the, um. Animating infrastructure grant, um, program is one that has been mentioned. That has a deadline of December ten. And that's up to fifteen grand.
And that's for a specific piece of artwork somewhere, in a specific place?
Yeah, right, fabrication and installation of artwork. No match.
That library courtyard would be perfect.
Now, you know, whether or not this is the type of grant that the planning commission wants to pursue, cause it's got a great idea. Or instead wants to play the matchmaker or facilitator or supporter of, say, you know, say the craft school. Hey, you know, are you guys aware of this? And if we write the letter of support or whatever.
I don't think the craft school is aware of this one. I'm on the board over there and.
I knew that, and so.
That would be a good pairing, though.
Is fifteen thousand sufficient for anything of any significant? Is fifteen thousand dollars sufficient for anything of any significant size or impact?
Yeah, it, the, the artist wouldn't make a killing, but you could get something.
Respectful amount?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So a while back, there was, um, Kate Webb, I believe, had reached out because she had been traveling. And maybe this was just an idea she had floated with the paths committee, maybe you remember Kate. She had gone to Boulder or some community where. Along a path, there was a series of signs, interpretive signs, that tied the location to this larger theme. So she was thinking, oh, maybe on the Thai Hall, wouldn't it be great to have this series of signs where the distance that you go, it's going back in time or forward in, anyway. Interpretive signs along the Thai Hall could be, you know, fifteen thousand dollars, could call up Dan Albrecht at the Regional Planning Commission and find out. How much those signs cost or some other, or something. Um, but I think of places like the Thai Hall as potential locations, the library I think of as a location, this building could be a location.
Yeah.
The bike, the path, the sidewalk.
This is an aside a little bit, but speaking of public things that were made, the little fountain outside, that's never running anymore. It seems. What's the deal with that? Is, I mean, there's something that, there was a certain amount of money put out.
The, the rotary part right here, that's, that Fritz designed, I think.
Okay.
Um.
It was going this summer, wasn't it?
Yeah, uh, I would say talk to Darryl. I, I don't know the story.
See, somebody plugged their car and blew a circuit and that's what's there.
Yeah, it probably is. Somebody is charging his car and it's just like.
All right, I, and just in the back of the mind, I still am a huge fan of the whole public pulling something off a website. I don't, I don't know. If that's a grantable type of a thing or what the grant world looks like in terms of where things come along, but anything that could help facilitate something like that.
Yeah.
Really help with feedback.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm trying to think of what would be a possible source of that.
I, I'm, I'm really getting this theme and this kind of ties into the other business stuff, but I, I'm, I'm really hearing a theme of, of people saying, well, you know, here's, here's how things need to. Should be, what, what can I do? And aside from saying, well, get involved, come to a meeting, it's, I'm not gonna go to a meeting, there's. D R B Select Board, Planning Commission, you're not gonna be in meetings all the time, but where, where could I go just to check things out? And I feel like having something like a weekly poll on the website or something would encourage people to think, oh, yeah, you know, I should go and see what the question is and maybe weigh in. And then maybe you see some other stuff and just a way of engaging, bringing people in a little bit, yeah.
Right, that's good.
Yeah, I mean, I think I mentioned, pretty sure I mentioned that when Heinzberg updated its plan, it did a whole series of mini polls. They would get in between a hundred and two hundred people and they didn't, they didn't, uh, do a full-blown survey or poll. But they did do, I think, three or four, somebody could take it on or this group could take it on if you wanted to try to do. I think doing more than three or four a year could start to get to be, take some effort.
Yeah, well, and that's why I was sort of thinking in terms of just, yeah, I mean, we, we could certainly think through that and all that, but then there would be an implementation. And I understand the select board's concern around budget, you know, we, we can't just go throwing out ideas and saying, hey, this is great, but then things need to happen to support that. Like there's a maintenance aspect to it or there's an effort that needs to be put into it.
But there's, I mean, if, if the idea is to create some little engagement tool that's a survey, doesn't, doesn't cost too much to do that. I mean, it's really the time to put together the survey, I mean, figure out what it is that you want to ask.
Right, yeah, I have some bigger thoughts around that, that would, yeah, anyway, just that, that's something. Right, yeah, I have some bigger thoughts around that, that would, yeah, anyway, just that, that's something I've had in the back of my mind. All right, so on the time side, are we, is that good on the grants for now?
That's all I was gonna share.
And from a craft school standpoint, is that something that an email needs to go out to, or, or Stephen, is that something that you could bring to their attention?
Uh, I could bring it to their attention. Andrew's on the board, too.
Oh, cool, okay. Yeah, 'cause that's December tenth, right?
Presence there. But if, if there's something, Dean, like if you mind emailing that over?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Or a link anyway to it.
I will email it. I, I'm pretty sure it's, it is available at the link, so on the online version of the meeting packets.
Okay.
But I will send it.
All right. Any other?
Kate, can you just remind us of the November date of that conference where there's a couple of hours, and just focus on us?
I think it's like on the fifteenth.
Yeah, six, seven.
I was just, I was just thinking about that, and I, for some reason, didn't have it in here in my calendar. I'm pretty sure it's on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's the fifteenth, yeah.
So the same day as our meeting now.
Yeah. Or it might be, uh, you know, I'll let you know.
That would be great.
It's the Thursday of that week, because the housing conference is the Tuesday and the Wednesday.
Yeah. It must be, it's the fifteenth, I'm pretty sure.
And it's like a midday, midday?
Uh, we are, I think we are early up.
It's the first half of the day, right?
First, yeah, the first thing.
Okay.
And we're the longest focus of the, I'll, I'll, you know what, I'll, it's on my list of things to get to tomorrow.
Okay.
And I'll do a little synopsis of where we are and what I've done. I haven't been thinking about it for a little while, but.
But that's also something that, it's a register thing, right? Like, we couldn't just show up without.
Yeah.
No, it's, you gotta register, and.
So Andrew has, is, is coming for, has agreed to come for, um, the majority of the day. He's, he's got childcare things, you know, that will prevent him from being there the entire time, but he's, uh, signed up, and, um, and then, oh, and I think Jamie Hines is interested in coming too.
Yeah, there's some great sessions on there, yeah.
So, um, so we'll see. I think they're, they're, they're planning to have, like, forty-five professionals attending our session. I was a little concerned, 'cause it's at the same time as some big pow-wow on how effective is Act Two Fifty, and I thought, oh, boy, that, all the development folks are gonna go to that, but, um, you know, they feel pretty strongly that there'll be good attendance at, at, at ours, so that's nice.
Excellent.
So I've been working on an outline and, and, you know, just kind of moving things forward, but, um, I have, have some time coming up that I can focus more.
Great, yeah, thank you for doing that and finding out about it and all that stuff, that's really positive. Any other items?
On planning grants, or?
Uh, no, under business.
The other business?
Or fondness.
I, I just was gonna say, in terms of other possible zoning changes, um, I'm imagining that coming down the pike will be, uh, some further discussion of bike ped and the, the section of the zoning regs that's been difficult for the DRB to administer, having to do with sidewalk requirements. So that's something that's out there, and I know that Ravi has put together some material, I think. There is another item that has come to our attention, I'm just gonna mention very quickly. The commission changed the zoning in response to the request from Lake Champlain, uh, from Quiniasca, because they wanted to do their expansion, and we, we worked with Dave Marshall, and we wrote this section that would allow them to expand. We never, we wrote it in a way that means that the language doesn't apply to other situations, namely, a lot that is not on a road. So I'm thinking of, so a specific parcel. Lake Champlain Transportation owns this tiny little lot where they pull their boats out of the water, and they do work on their ferries and things like that. It's entirely surrounded by land owned by the Shelburne Shipyard. This section could allow them to make modifications to the buil, to a building they have on this tiny little lot, but the, but it doesn't help them, because the, like, this paragraph was added refers to setback from public highway. Well, they're not on a public highway. So, um, they had come in many, many months ago, but just after the change was made, and I said, oh, if you'd only shown up a little bit before, we could've, we would've thought about this. Then they went away, and then they've come back, and they, they need a variance, basically, to do what they wanna do with this building. And we've said, you know, maybe instead of going for a variance that you might not get, let's see what the planning commission's reaction will be. So I'm just mentioning this to you, that I will be preparing some material that, um, would suggest the possibility of making further amendments to that section, because if they had only shown up before, I think you would've folded it all in. It's this basic idea of, if it's too close, can they expand some? And that's what they need.
Okay.
And vehicle charging stations, we've already talked about, so that was the last thing.
Yeah, and I, I know I've made a reference to it before, but the, uh, I, I chatted with Lee a little bit, and I'd like, just like to chat with you and Lee and, and Ravi, just to see how we can streamline some of these things, because there is a little bit of irony in the DRB issue that came up recently, in that the changes that we made were at the request of the DRB, initially.
Well, there was a change, there was a request made by a member of the DRB for additional flexibility, basically to not require sidewalks, and the response of the commission was, no, that's not what the policy should be.
And, and I wasn't saying that to dump on them at all.
No, 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 but I just, it does need to be kept straight, that there was a policy difference between the member of the DRB and the commission.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm looking at this more of a, a bigger picture, that I, I completely understand the intent from this commission, and I don't want to thwart any future paths and sidewalks and that sort of thing, but at the same time, if we have, if we have zoning regulations that are, that ask for certain things, that then the town can't support for one reason or another, or it can't be funded or something, that then you have those arguments of the sidewalk to nowhere and that sort of thing, and I'd like to just figure out how we can get ahead of that, so that.
Yeah.
And I think that's coming together with the paths committee and the.
Maybe impact fees or something, a fund?
Something like that, or a consistent way of getting easements, or creating a fund that, when you do have these impact fees, it's a place that it goes, and then that can support the future infrastructure, but that, I think we need a more well-rounded approach, so that we can't just be picked apart in individual instances, which are hard to argue.
Yeah, some of what you're trying to do is difficult, and it's difficult to do if there's a member of the board whose stated position is, I'm not gonna require somebody to do something that I think the public should be paying for. And so it's going to be next to impossible to have successful implementation of the regs if they're written to require something, and if members of the board say, well, I just don't believe in the public requiring that.
And, and that's the conversation that I kind of wanna force, just to say, hey, let's get on the same page and open this up, and do what is right for the community, instead of being able to pick things apart on technicalities and.
Yeah, sure, personal, you know, beliefs or something like that.
Right.
Yeah. Um, yeah, and, and create a, a more predictable format for property owners, too, so that.
Right.
There's a clear, the expectation is clear, and, yeah. Um, so, I mean, an impact fee, Dean, is that, that's.
Impact fees are possible, I mean, there are a lot of work to maintain, to make, I mean, I guess the question would be.
Is there a fund, or is there, I mean, what are, what are some of the mechanisms that can be?
Well, I mean, I guess one of the questions would be, are we looking at paths, we used, we have historically looked at paths as recreational things, but we look at them more and more as transportation things. So one question is, how are we looking at them now? There is an existing recreation impact fee system, and it's been used to pay for paths on Webster Road, but I'm not sure that's, and it hasn't been updated in forever. It's possible that we could continue to use the rec-impact fee, but we would need to do a study to justify the fee.
Could we, could we have a, a brand-new impact fee, like a transportation, multimodal transportation impact fee?
Yeah, transportation, a transportation impact fee has been discussed in the past, um, but it, too, would take a lot of work to set up. You have to do an impact fee based on a study where there's a, uh, basically, the community has to determine what the level of service is going to be. So if you think about ball fields, then the level of service is gonna be, we're gonna have X number of fields per thousand people. Or paths, we're gonna have X number of miles per thousand people. We need to know what that level of service will be, um, what the standard is, and then we have to figure out, are we meeting it, or if we're not meeting it? If we're not meeting it, we can't charge developers to help bring us up. We can only charge them for their new development. So it gets, it gets complicated pretty quickly, so that's why I say it takes effort to establish a new impact fee.
So what, are there other ways to do that, that, like a fund?
This should be part of the discussion that we get into, we're, we're over time, but not, I mostly just wanted to say that as setting an expectation that I think there needs to be a more broad conversation, and then the bike ped zoning topic needs to be tackled pretty hard, but those are joint things.
I still think that that issue last week could've been settled with an easement. It, it would've been simple. The DRB could've honored Darren, and easement may or may not be a path to nowhere, but if it wasn't, if it never got developed, at least that aspect is there, but that trail would be there, or that easement would be there for the next generation. So I don't, I didn't see the complicity in that, and, um, so I don't think it's terribly wrong the way it's written, to be honest with you.
I'm happy to talk about this more, but could I take a motion to adjourn?
Sure, I'll do that, too.
All right, so move by Kate, second, second by Susanna, all right.
Thank you, everybody.